To read. Marilyn is going to read a piece of correspondence that was received. She's, Chris Under is not here, so I'm sitting as president pro tem for the day. And Marilyn is the clerk, she will read a piece of correspondence we received.
Okay, on 9/15, we received correspondence from Amanda Mowgli. That reads as follows. Chris and other public servants. Perhaps you owe all those in quotes snake people you shamed an apology. Parenthetically Jeff, remember when you tried to violate ADA law? And have me provide you with my private medical information? I do, and I'm sure other parents who heard you scolded me in the parking lot do too. Perhaps those quote unscientific anti-vaxxer and quote individuals were able to make a personal individualized risk benefit analysis for themselves. Simply quote following the fundamental and blatant discriminatory order does not make it moral. Parenthetically, remember all the evil people in history who followed orders? The ones who did it for health and safety reasons, end print. Would you have complied with segregation? Would you have complied with the Nazis? Is discrimination acceptable sometimes if it's against quote the other? Your integrity has been compromised. And in my opinion, none of you that participated in this charade should be anywhere near children. As it's very clear, you do not have their best interest at heart. And will go with the flow if that means keeping your job. I hope you sleep well at night, knowing you did your part in creating a hostile work environment and ostracizing an entire group of people for no reason. Enjoy looking your quote inclusive self in the mirror.
Is there anyone, we have one person from the public here this morning. And if you have any public comments, Mr. Krill, I'll just call you out since we're among friends. We do this time. Seen none, and we will move on to the agenda. This is a study session, so it's a little, a little less, less formal. So we will begin with our first discussion item, which is the Measure D date.
Well, since Ryan is on his way back from a safety drill at Laguna Middle School right now, where he's debriefing with the staff, he's on his way. I'll jump in if I could and.
Marilyn, Marilyn, Marilyn.
Hold on, sorry.
Please step outside.
Sure.
He's still up with the monitor, sorry.
Yeah, so I'd like to just start, if I could, and let everyone know that we have our first Measure D public tour of San Luis Obispo High School and Morro Bay High School this Saturday. We've sent out a public press release. And, and we're excited about that. It's an opportunity for the public at large to come and see the completed projects at both of our high schools, as well as those projects in currently taking place and underway. The San Luis Obispo High School tour will begin at 10:00 AM. They will be student led, which I think is really cool. And at Morro Bay High, they start at 2:00. So it'll give people an opportunity across our district community to see both high schools, hopefully maybe turn it into a day. Or maybe to get some lunch in between, enjoy the, the, I think, the excitement of both of our beautiful high schools. Measure D, just, just to kind of remind everyone, we, we expect to be completed with all of the projects that we promised within two years. And, and if not sooner, but we have, we have the majority of, I think, there, we have the majority of the projects already done. And like I said, this Saturday will be probably one of several community opportunities where they can come and look. You know, many of the people I've spoken with outside of the school community, but live in our district community have asked me, you know, hey, I've heard great things about the San Luis Obispo High School Theater or the Morro Bay High Pool, the track and field at Slow High, the, the, the various things on, the classrooms, the math buildings, the science labs. And I, you know, I basically said, you really should come and see it. And they said, well, are you going to open up the opportunity? So here we go, this will see, we'll see how it goes. We'll see if we have an interest. I suspect we will. I think word will get out, and if we have enough interest, we'll continue to do this as we go. And I know that when I go to those sites and walk around, I, I just can't say enough about the energy, the pride in these facilities. Measure D, the team we have has done, I think, an exceptional job. It's been very difficult to do this work, especially in an environment of inflation, in the environment of supply chain issues, as well as workforce issues. I mean, all of those things have formed, formed during the Measure D projects. And, and the fact that we've been able to get this work done within our budget, within our promises, is really exciting. And, and yes, there are some things that we still need to work out. There, there, there's some things I'm hearing about, about public access to the San Luis Obispo High School pool. I'm still hearing those things. Well, we're working it out. We have, we have a new athletic director. We have a new. We have a new athletic director, a new principal at Slow High. We are a new swim coach. We have a lot of new, and so we're working that out. And, and it's a little more complicated in San Luis than it is in Morro Bay, because San Luis has a Sin Samba pool. And we no longer use that pool, so it's opened up a lot of public space at that existing pool. That doesn't mean that we won't open up swim for the public at San Luis Obispo High School's pool in time. It's just a matter of getting our systems in place. But both of our Morro Bay and Slow High school pool facilities are phenomenal. And I'm just so pleased with it. So all of this said, is, it's about kids. It's about giving our kids school facilities that, that represent pride, represent our, our belief that they deserve the best. And I think we're delivering. So there you have it, hope to see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Catherine.
I just have a quick question for you, Dr. Prater. Which, how will the public in general, where is a source that they could go to to find out with the dates and times of these various tours?
Yeah, so if you, we, we sent out a public release. We put it up on the website, so it's on the district website. And.
Parents' square with all the parents.
It, it went out in Parents' Square with all the parents. And Mandy sent it out to our key contacts out in the community, the media. So this will all start hitting the, if you don't know yet kind of the details, all you need to do is go to our district website or call our district office, and we'll give you the info. 10:00 AM Slow High, 2:00 PM Morro Bay High, this, this Saturday.
And it's, when you go to the website, I went on our website yesterday, it's the first thing you see is the banner on the website now, is, is a notification about that.
And I believe they're also putting this out at KSDY and in the Tribune.
Do we have the ability right now to put that up on the screen? So anyone who happens to be watching this right now will become familiar with it? Or is that not possible?
Yes, of course.
Looks like it's just Ryan Krill, so we can.
Ryan, can you share your screen, go up on the district website? Jessica, are you in the background on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And we can also share the.
Nice.
There we go, there we go.
Yeah.
First thing you see when you pull it up.
Nice.
It's been that way for a couple of days now.
Yeah. Yeah, so spread the word. And really, this is the beginning of.
Yeah, we'll do this.
Of several opportunities. We just wanted to, you know, put our, our feet in the water and, and see if there's interest out there to come check it out.
I think that'll be accessible. I just wonder whether people who aren't as savvy to doing this kind of thing, if there's a, if there's an easy, simple way that we can, because as I'm looking at my own screen, it's got like five things across the top. I just want to make it as simple as possible for people to get in right away. So maybe we can come up with a real simple. Like right now, it says Measure D Study Session. That would be, that would be a nice thing for people to come in and just see what we're up to, too. Anyway, just going to throw that out there.
Yeah, we'll keep working at it, Catherine. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know. I think.
I mean, we, again, hopefully it's going to be the Tribune, New Times, you know, other.
I would also, maybe the Chamber will also send it out press, because this was a huge impact on the community, huge boost to property values. If you think about it, we're trying to improve the school and improve the community. So I'm hoping the Chamber also, since we're, we're good standing members.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, we've sent it out to hundreds, thousands of people.
That's, that's correct.
Through our own key contact list.
Great.
So Mandy has sent that out, it's out there. That very thing you just saw on the website, that was the invitation. So we're trying to make it as simple as we can. Whether people read their stuff, whether, you know, they pay attention to it, if, if they don't make it this time, we'll have another one.
I think the word amounts, right? This is the initial, you know, kind of invite. People will go around, they'll see it, and then hopefully it'll spread, and we'll, we'll do some more.
Okay, so Mr. Pinkerton.
Yeah, so, so I have Bell's palsy. Yeah, so I'll just let you know that right away. So it's a little, you know, right side of face, it's a high wrist. It'll go away, but.
It's kind of like the pirate glove.
I'm speaking, you know, it's a little, it's, you know, a little rough, but.
Did you okay?
I'll get there, oh no, you're fine. Yeah, it's, it's just one of those, like, you have to deal with it, right? So, so if I hold my face up a little bit, it'll help me talk. It, it's, it's good, right? I mean, you can actually laugh about it, because it, it'll go away, it's a virus, those types of things. So, yeah, all, all good. So this, the first document is basically the kind of the budget I do with the CBLC. So as you can see, Measure D was $177 million, right? We have earned interest over the years, right? Measure D's in the county treasury, right, which is great. But, you know, again, helped us with all of these. We of course got state funding for Bellevue, for the San Luis CT projects, as well as Morro Bay. And so you take all that, that's, you know, almost $17 million, right? And it gets us very close to, you know, turning that $177 million into $200 million, right? And then over the years, we laid out, you know, where have those dollars been, right? So again, it's very transparent, right? It's, it's right here, this is, this is what it is. And our CBLC will go over it, prove it. And then they of course, you know, send the, the board a letter each year, kind of qualifying the amounts. So though Measure D focused on the two comprehensive high schools, there was work, you know, throughout the district, right? And kind of like this next one is potentially focused on elementary and middle schools, right? There's a, you know, there's work throughout the district that ties into it. So as you can see, we're down to really the two high schools. So in particular, Morro Bay High, right? Finishing the building A, which is the theater, multi-purpose room, choir, drama room, backstage area was most of the expenses. Building B is a classroom building which finished up. And then of course, right now, we're in the midst of building C renovations, which I will be sharing some pictures with the board after I'm done. And then, you know, some general campus wide expenditures, things that inspectors, you know, things that don't necessarily tie into a particular project, but are expenses, right? So, you know, to date, about $60 million. I would anticipate that Morro Bay High is, is going to be about $70 million when we're done. Like that will be the, the overall budget, the amount that, the amount that we spend at Morro Bay High. And then again, the next is really San Luis Obispo High School, right? So there, right now, we're in the midst of the 100 building, the center section, as well as the north. Center is the multi-purpose room, kitchen, top, top, top of the building. And the second story is a lot of classrooms along the front, and then the digital media labs, as well as the Tiger's, Tiger News Network, kind of movie display classrooms as well. And then where, I mean, they are moving really fast in the north, which is the library, career center, and classrooms as well. So, and then the last part, Slow High is really, they're going to be finishing up, and I'll show you some pictures of the 500 kind of stairways, access points, and then they'll be going and finishing the quad area, right, to complete more of our San Luis Obispo High School. You know, Slow High is going to be probably in the $90 million range. And again, the size of the school, the number of classrooms, those types of things, that's the, the reason for the difference between Slow High and Morro Bay in terms of, from a financial standpoint. Although we know that, you know, when you look at both school sites, you're going to see very like, you know, all the projects in terms of the, you know, tracks and fields and CT facilities and pools. And, you know, all of those things will be very similar across the both sites. So that's, I mean, really, we're down to those, those two schools, right? In terms of finishing the projects. And so the next budget I'll share is. Is this one. And so this is actually one that kind of warms my heart, right? When you think about, again, since 2014, doing these projects, trying to land this airplane and get, get, you know, get everything that we anticipated to get done. The fact that we're this close and that the budget's coming in where it is is, is I think a celebration, right? So these are the projects that are left to date, right? Again, slow climbing and infrastructure, that's the quad. Building 100, which I talked about, right? Which is the, the middle section, as well as the north end. Building 500, we're redoing the bathrooms in that building right now. So all the bathrooms across that entire campus will be, all be completely, completely modernized now. And then we just completed building 300 and 400, which is the CT wings ag, was the last one we had completed, right? Along with the, the construction classrooms and welding. And so I have some photos to share with you with that as well. The slow track and field project is also very near completion. We did have an issue with the drain on one end. Man of Construction was out last week, put the new drain in, concrete's there. So they, it has a 29-day curate, so we're about 26 days from now. They're going to come in, finish the track surface, and then they'll put the, the lines around the track at that point. So we're about a month away, so that'll make Mr. Krill very happy, right? And, and so again, that was one where, you know, unfortunately, the plans had, had some issues between pages, right? And so we, we, I didn't want to have a track that people complain about for the next, you know, 30 years, right? So we, we fixed it and got it done right. And nobody's, you know, nobody was able to tell, took a couple of months. But the good news is we're still, you know, using the stadium, the concession stands open now. It's a, you know, I think they're a real positive for that. In, in ensuring that we have, you know, again, balanced facilities, right? We have, we're adding a scoreboard to Morro Bay High School, right? That looks just exactly like San Luis Obispo High School's, right? Because we want, again, we want to make sure that at the end of the day, this is a celebration, right, for both sides. There's no, oh, they got this, we got that, you know, those types of things. That this is really, again, a celebration. And these tourists on Saturday will be the first chance for us to kind of share that celebration with the public. Again, the, the last two projects, Morro Bay High School, building A, right? We are finishing up, I'll show you some pictures. That's the multi-purpose room, the kitchen, the drama, classroom, choir. You know, if you walk into Slow High Theater, again, beautiful facility, right? Nice green room. You know, the, the theater itself, right? Random building, not modernized. Yeah, it, it's nicer, you know? I mean, just to be honest, right? But what I will tell you is that Morro Bay, they're back. Area, right? Their, their dressing rooms, their green rooms, those types of things are, they're better than Slow High's, right? So you're going to see that, you know, throughout, right? So, you know, the J Wing at Morro Bay High, those CT classrooms, because they're big and have, you know, tall ceilings and bigger rooms, you know, they end up being nicer than the 300 wing classrooms that we've modernized at Slow High for welding, woodshop, and ag. Now that said, you walk through them and, you know, you can't, they're, again, it's a celebration. It's not, oh, that's better than, than what we have. They're all excellent facilities for kids, right? So I think that's key. So again, when we look at this, in terms of the, the amount of money we have left, so we're down to about $36 million of projects. We anticipate $2 million in developer fees next year. We already have a million dollars in reserve right now. So if, if, if we only get a million, right? I'm actually anticipating that our developer fees will cover the entire balance. This year, we received 3.4 million in developer fees over the course of the year, and I would anticipate that it's going to be very close to that next year as well. Vond interest, of course, will be down a little bit, because we're spending those funds, right? That are in the county treasury. And then some of the other things, so again, $200 million, we're down to about 1.6 million. We do have money in Fund 40 as well to, to help pay this. So we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to pay all of our bills. We're going to complete the projects as planned. And it's not going to affect, you know, our general fund budget as we move forward, right? So I'm excited about that. We have put in, just so the board knows, for state modernization funding. So Bishop's Peak, Seal Smith, San Luis Obispo Gym, as well as Morro Bay Track and Field. So the state in some future, you know, time from now will be hopefully writing us a check for, you know, over $4 million to help us with facility needs in the future, right? So the other ones on the write are just kind of Kelly Lee's calculations as she, she puts us together. So, you know, again, big picture, I feel really good about where we're at. You know, we, we made the necessary changes that, that we needed to in terms of the projects and coming in a budget, those types of things. So any questions about the budgets before I start this presentation?
We have one person from the public here. Mr. Krill, do you have any questions for us as we go through this? They're not on the card.
Yep. I like the parable. As we went through this, was this the bottom line, like 1.6, 2 million? Was that sort of expected? Was that a surprise?
I mean, honestly, I think it's, it's fantastic. I mean, when you think about $200 million of all the projects that we've had and to, to kind of come into this point. And, you know, I, again, I think with, with developer fees over the next two years, it'll be nothing.
So I appreciate that.
Yep.
So what I'm trying to remember is we have these meetings once a month, and I can't remember if there was going to be a negative on the bottom line.
So I think the last time, yeah, the last time the negative was like 3 million.
Good, okay, that's, that's, that's what I see.
So it's actually come down lower than we had anticipated probably a year ago. And we've, so a couple of things we did. One, we worked on the quad project at Slow High.
Yeah.
We made some, some changes to that, right? Because again, this is about, we've known for two to three years kind of coming in, budget, trying to, you know, get to that point where everything's going to be covered. So we did make some tweaks to that, to that quad plan. So we can have our architects go back, do some redesign, you know, what are some things we can scale down? Again, you'll never know that any of that happened, right? We also did the same thing at building C, Morro Bay. So sat down with the architects, again, turned that from, I think, $11 million project to an $8 million. So, you know, made those necessary reductions to make it to get us to this point. But, but I didn't want to make reductions that were going to compromise kind of what we wanted to accomplish, right? So yeah, it's 1.6 where we're at now, but, you know, I, I still, I mean, honestly, that's, Mr. Olk, you can tie in, right? Like that's, that's about as good as it gets, I would say, in terms of finishing every, all of the projects that we had set up to do.
If you look at all the factors of change we've dealt with, it's compared to the Indianapolis Speedway, things were going everywhere in direction at enormous velocities, but I think we have adjusted and adjusted well and not, not hurt our program or our promises to the public.
And so, and so you mentioned, you mentioned Fund 40. Can you explain a little more what Fund 40 is?
So Fund 40 is a, it's, the board has set aside money for facility projects. And so we, it's just an extra fund that we have set up for that.
Is that our deferred payment system?
Yeah. It's not, I mean, deferred payment is actually built into the budget. So this is kind of on top of that.
And what's currently in that, huh?
I can pull up un-audited actuals real quick and I'll tell you. So at the last board meeting, we went over all the funds, right? So let me, let me, let me share that real quick. Oh, good, if there's other questions, we can keep going on.
Catherine, you got a question? Yeah, Catherine?
Okay, thank you. I just had, I was just wondering if we have an updated kind of influx of people to our community and to our, our schools? And if we, how, and how we're projecting that? And if that's included in what we're doing now? Are we adding, like, we assume that there will be another 10% of parents and families moving here? Do, do we have anything to, to go by with that, Brian?
You know, from our, our demographic report that we did back in, I think, January, we, we see really, I mean, honestly, I, I envision us kind of staying stable. You know, from student population, I don't see us growing. I don't necessarily see us shrinking. And honestly, I think that's, you know, COVID, COVID was strange, right? It took kids from our schools. You know, parents didn't want a mask, they are doing private schools, they're doing other things. So I, I envision us getting some of those kids back. We already have, you know, I, over the, over the past year, even this fall. But, I mean, that said, with the price of homes, even with construction, I, you know, I think if anything, those new homes are just helping us stay stable, right? So that's, you know, that's what I would envision over the time. So, you know, for Morro Bay, with, with building C, Morro Bay is going to have, I mean, more space than they would know what to do with, from a classroom standpoint, right? Like they are set. Slow High, we will take out the, the portable classrooms that are between the quad and the field there, right? So that'll, you know, that's just from a beautification standpoint, that's going to look much nicer. And then what I talked with Roland about is, hey, let's just, we'll leave the other portables in place behind the old gym for now, and we'll see where it goes, right? Let's see, you know, because again, they're going to get a ton of classrooms on that second floor of the 100 building. And there's also a ton of classrooms on the north end, behind the library. So they should be, you know, they should too, be in good shape, right? And so I, I mean, ideally, we would then remove the other portables that, that are on that campus if, if, if they're not needed.
Bravo.
So to answer Marilyn's question, so in Fund 40, we currently have 1.2 million.
Okay, and that's not earmarked, it has no specific earmarks on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so again, and we still have over a million dollars in, in developer fees, right? As well. So those are kind of the key.
So we currently have a million dollars?
Yeah.
Unresponsive.
Yeah.
Oh, I misunderstood.
To start the year.
I thought you were expecting to, great, okay.
No, so I, I, I think by the end of this year, we're going to have another 3.5 million, right? So yeah, I think it'll grow a couple of million.
Well, that's pretty.
I'm, I'm almost anticipating that those developer fees are going to pick up the negative balance.
We're not going to end up with a slowdown. We're not gonna end up with a swimming pool, are we, yeah?
No, 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 no.
All right. Sorry, little take it casual. And, and just one last thing, so as we, as we dealt with the Sore, at Moro Bay, at San Luis High School.
Uh-huh.
So there was a, like, at the drain, at the track.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah, with the city of Slow, huh?
There was a mistake made, is that something that the developer, that the contractor pays for, that you pay for, that the architect pays for, because there was a mistake?
So you're talking about the track and field project? Yeah, that's, um, you know, that is basically, not the district. So the, so the contractor, along with the other, um, you know, architects, designed for the above grade, you know, the engineering for the house layout, like, they, they're gonna have to figure that out.
Thank you.
Right, but for us, no, it's not, not a cost.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Good, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna point out that hearing Mr. Pinkerton sounded enthusiastic about the bottom line is a rare thing.
Right, yeah. It's not the general fund budget, for sure.
It's not, it's not, um, how we often hear you. So I, that means things are going really well.
Yeah, and I mean, and for me, I can't, you know, a year from now, when these projects are all done, but I mean, it is, I mean, it really is, it's a celebration, right? They, again, before, I remember walking around in 2013 to our school sites, in particular Moro Bay and Slow High, with Dr. Prater, right, with all of you. And it was almost like embarrassing, like, the state of our high schools, right? And so now, when you, you take people onto that campus, like, Rollin, I was talking to Rollin yesterday, the principal at Slow High, and he was like, it's, you know, parents come in, they want tours. Like, parents perspective, parents will call Rollin and say, you know, pick in between Slow High and Mission, or whatever. And so, he's like, hey, it sells itself, right? All I gotta do is walk them around, take a look. I mean, I was just at Moro Bay today, walking, you know, taking some photos for this, and walking through that quad, right? You know, the new theater building, it's like, I mean, it's crazy how, like, they are beautiful, right? Our, these schools, so, um, a lot to be proud of, uh, that we've accomplished, right? And, uh, and then hopefully for the community, right, they're gonna see it. I know that the kids, right, having bathrooms that are new and facilities, right? I mean, the pool, the number of kids that are doing, um, you know, junior high club swim now, that's district run, right? It's a district program. But just, you know, more kids involved, active, so it's a, it really is a positive thing, so.
And I just wanna say, Mr. Holc, that is.
We're a team, right, we're a team.
We function, we function very well as a team. Just to drop back to Catherine's question, though. Catherine, I think, demographically, 70% of our growth are in people 55-plus. So that's why we're not too concerned about additional classrooms. So we have a little margin of safety, but, uh, it's kind of a, I don't know if you call it a demographic disappointment in a sense, but our growth is in retirees.
And I just, like, I applaud this, but I think it's my job to ask questions.
Of course, sure, oh, absolutely, yeah.
And I'm, you know, I think that's why I'm saying, so I'm not upset, but I think I gotta ask.
They're good, they're good questions.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
The, the portables at Slow High, are they, do we consider those, um, surplus indisposable, or do we wanna retain them for the potential use, uh, if Measure C passed?
Yeah, so of course, right? So if, um, if the vote is approved Measure C in November, we would definitely use those for our other facilities as we do modernization of those sites.
Right, you might point out, there's two groups that are relocatable, some that wouldn't be used again, and some that would, just based on.
Yeah, it depends on, yeah, if they can condition.
How many times would we move them in that?
Yeah, right, but definitely a savings, uh, by using those again. So just a couple of quick photos, um, for the board, right, to go through. So the first one is the passageway, or the stairs between the 500 and, um, the 100 building. So they're currently building the brick wall on the right side there, they're gonna be putting those stairs in. Again, you know, kudos to the students and staff at Slow High. Uh, it, you know, it's, construction on your campus is crazy, right? Like, to live it, um, and so, you know, there, we have to have access points. So what's gonna happen is, as they finish this, they'll begin to landscape that entire area, and then we'll have the other stairs that go up to the 100 building. And then, you know, once that access is set and usable, then they'll start on the actual quad stuff, right? That middle section of, um, of San Luis High School. So, um, so that's just a, you know, a real positive thing.
And in addition to all the stairs, we have, um, alternate ways of accessing.
Oh, right now, yes, yeah, they go around right now. But again, we, you have to have those kind of main thoroughfares for kids to get around, so, and this one will be a huge, uh, you know, help once, once it's done. So they're anticipating that those stairs being opened in about a month, so that'll be really nice. And again, I'm not allowing them to move on to other portions of the quad until we have those access points ready to go. So this is just a quick photo of the front of the 100 building, right? Again, you got kind of the clock tower, that's the elevator that had to be put in, right, because it's a two-story. Really some beautiful features that would kind of match the theater and the front office. You know, access points, so the whole bottom section of that building is the, kind of a multi-use room, right? Place for kids, kind of commons, they call them. Kids can eat, hang out, drink lunchtime, break, those types of things. Of course, a huge kitchen in the back of that building, which used to be the library. And so, you know, the ability for them to feed all of the kids at San Luis High School once this building is done, especially with meals for all, right, is, uh, is gonna be outstanding. And then the second half, the top, you know, there's gonna be some really fortunate teachers that have those classrooms along that edge, right? And so, you know, those are some beautiful classrooms with beautiful views. And on the back end is actually where the digital media labs are, as well as, um, kind of a classroom space for the Tiger News Network. But, I mean, just really a beautiful facility. And, um, again, it's hard to tell here, but this is actually the north end, which will be the library, career center, and the classrooms along this back end all the way around. It, it doesn't seem like much yet, but they're, they're moving it there. So they've done the floor, and they're actually, the entire interior is all, um, has all the, you know, kind of the walls coming up, those types of things. And so I'm really, um, really excited about the progress that they're making on that north end, um, as well right now. So from the back end, this was the old library, right? You can kind of see the top, which will be the digital media. We, there's, there is, again, the front now is windows, right? It used to have a walkway all the way around, right? But now the front is windows, um, but it does have a walkway that is kind of three sides. On this back end, we did end up deciding to put the railing all the way up to the ceiling, just because there's a lot of HVAC equipment on this, um, kitchen roof that it's just, you know, we, it's just too easy for somebody to jump off and, you know, it's kind of a dangerous situation, right, potentially, so. So they are fabricating that kind of top there to make that all the way across, right? But, again, beautiful views, um, from that top area there, and less the prison look that it used to have, right? Um, on the top of that 100 building. Again, this is another picture, kind of a little bit up on the hill, right? You can kind of see what we're talking about. It will be painted, right, to match the same color as the science wing, the southern section, like you see there, the tan and brown. But it's coming along, so we're, you know, we're anticipating a January opening of these facilities, right? The nice part will be, we'll be able to move the classrooms that are up here on the hill, right? The kids walking up every day. Well, you know, there won't be any more classes up on the adult school, um, district office site after January. So that's an exciting thing. Again, I talked a little bit about the CTE wings, right? So, uh, they just, they finished all of the asphalt, um, in between the welding, engineering rooms, the construction and computer lab, as well as the ag. So, again, new asphalt through those areas, which is, looks beautiful, right? The ag, uh, building is now done. Each of the, um, CTE wings all have this outdoor work area, right? So, again, an expanded area for kids to work outside. It's locked, it's been stocked, right? You know, it doesn't like, you know, in the past, they would have like all their wood outside, their wood projects, or it just looked messy, right? Like, so, so having this area, I think, for all three groups, um, is really a win. And then just a couple shots of some of the inside areas as well of that building. So they do have a culinary kitchen in the ag building, so this is it. Again, some of the oven, um, you know, the floral refrigerators for their, their horticulture classes, those types of things are still coming in, right? And so it's not completely finished, but, you know, they're in, they're teaching classes, they're in their wings. And probably the best thing that came out of this, really, for the ag teachers, is this beautiful kind of workshop area right now that they have. And so, you know, they're able to do a lot of different projects and, um, you know, variety of things in this large area than what they have been able to do in the past. This is just, I just took a couple of quick snapshots of the, um, of the classrooms, right? So it's basically kind of like a science classroom setup, right? So you have your sinks, your, um, you know, your science, your cabinetry there, um, throughout. They have their own office that the, um, the ag leadership kids use as well, right, for the meetings. This is just another quick shot of the classroom, right? So, um, you know, throughout that campus now, except for, I think, the library, it's all concrete floors. So the benefit of that really is the, um, it just makes it so much easier for custodians to clean, right? So, I mean, mopping a floor in the summer versus having the carpet cleaned for months, right? It's just a huge thing. And now with, you know, things like summer school, where we have, you know, thousands of students, right, all summer long, it's really imperative that, um, you know, these types of situations, right? That it just, our custodians will actually still be able to clean the rooms with the programs that we have in place. So it's good. Moro Bay High, I just took a couple of quick shots, again, it's kind of hard to tell, right? But I just wanted you to see kind of where they're at. So this is the, this is Building A, which is the theater. All of the green rooms, spaces, and changing rooms, right, for kids, as well as a drama room, choir room, a huge kitchen, as well as a multi-purpose room. So that, that is gonna be a really big center of that campus, right? And it walks right out to the quad area, so, you know, great setup for them. But there, again, flooring's done, they're, right now, they're getting ready to, uh, you know, to paint, they're putting up tile in the kitchen area. So it's, you know, by January, again, this, they'll be able to inhabit the space, use it, and that will help alleviate some of the classroom issues right now that we're waiting on with Building C. Again, it's kind of, you know, it's a little hard to tell. This is kind of the back area behind the stage, where you have the dressing rooms and the facilities there. So this is the, this is actually the multi-purpose room area. The, the back end is kind of the kitchen where the kids go and get the food, come back out, right? There's a huge storage room to keep their tables and chairs in, so they can use this for dances, they can use it for, um, you know, functions, senior activities, those types of things as well.
Right.
Yeah.
I just, uh, I, I believe I know the answer to this, but I'm just asking for the benefit of the public, if there is any public, uh, watching this. The, uh, interior instructional spaces, were they designed and furnished in collaboration with the teachers that would be using them? So that, that is to say, the people who would be.
Yeah.
Using the space said, this is how I'd like to see it configured and laid out, and what I need in terms of, uh, equipment and furniture and sort of having.
So, um, in a nutshell, yes, right? Now that said, there are some standards that we have and have developed, right? But Chris Bonn meets individually with teachers. So like, he met with the science staff at Slow High. And, you know, went over like, what tables do you have, what type of, um, presentation platform do you want? Do you, you know, chairs or different things? You know, he met with Anna and Jody at Slow High at their ag classroom. You know, do you want tables, do you want desks, do you want, you know, chairs? But, you know, so those types of things, yes, going through them, meeting with them. You know, and then there's, I would say probably more of that happens in those spaces where there's, you know, it's more specific, right? So an engineering classroom, you know, those types of things.
So for example, in the choir room.
Yes.
You know, I don't expect the teacher would specify a certain type of, um, sound baffling or sound, you know, attentionation, but that they would just say, I need to have this.
Sure.
And then someone else would, um, research it and come up with a spec for it.
Yeah, and so again, depending on this, the facility, right? So like with the theater, that was, we had a theater consultant that did the line sound, you know, backstage curtains, those types of things, right? And then we meet with the theater teacher, you know, and kind of get their feedback as well, right? And the other thing we're doing too is trying to get people to don't overbuy. Like, just get what you think you need, get in the space, right? Check it out, live in a little bit, and then you'll know, right? Hey, you know, I wish I would have one more table here, or a couple more chairs, or, you know, those types of things. So that has been something that Chris, um, has done a masterful job, right? Especially with staff and, and, you know, sitting down with them individually, having that conversation. You know, just get into the space a little, feel it out, right? Know that we're gonna, you know, it's not like, hey, I'm too bad, sorry, we're not gonna get it for you now. No, 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 no. We, you know, he meets back with them, he talks to them. I mean, we just ordered more, um, more furniture for the Moro Bay Commons areas, right? Now that the teachers aren't teaching in there anymore, we needed to, hey, what do you need? What are those spaces gonna be like? How are you gonna use them? And got their input, you know, for that, so.
Great.
So, yeah, so it's, it's, I, I, I think it's been a, a good process. Chris has done, again, spent a lot of time on it with staff. And I think that's probably why you haven't heard locally. You know, complaints about that, right? Because he's done, he really has spent a lot of time, um, doing that, and, you know, in a lot of ways, has almost become like a master of furniture, working with our furniture people, um, setting things up. Now, your normal classroom, you know, desk, chairs, setup, you know, most teachers are fantastic, right? So we do have kind of a, a model classroom for just a general, general ed class, right, of those tables, desks, chairs. Every teacher gets a teacher desk, every teacher gets, um, a display, kind of for the front, right? So it's, it's a, I can't remember what it's called. What's it called? A podium, right? Kind of a podium where they have their computer, they connect to their TV, right? To projection, right? So, so that's pretty standard throughout.
I would expect that there would be a standard for that.
Right, yeah.
I'm talking, I'm thinking more in terms of specialty classes.
Yeah.
CTE classes, um, arts, drama, what have you.
Exactly, so a lot of, a lot of that conversation happens. So like at Moro Bay High, you know, Brith Bellier, you know, everything from the band lockers to the types of music stands you want, right? All of that was part of the conversation when we went on with the step.
During this conversation, Marilyn's good question. When I just did Popcorn recently, and I think it changed, or maybe would have, some of the teachers were using a headset with a microphone, and it could broadcast to the students, and they, those teachers that were using it were under the impression that it really was helping. So will all, will all the teachers have access to?
So, so no. So we, we do have, um, a handful of teachers that have voice issues. And so, you know, while those projection devices are nice, not everybody wants to use them, to be honest with you. They're kind of a pain, to be honest with you. But, but as part of our ADA accessibility for teachers, uh, when those things happen, right? When we have issues, uh, we outfit the teachers. When we have issues, we, we outfit the teachers with the, with the mics and, you know, speakers, those types of things throughout. So just kind of as needed. If a teacher needed it or wanted it, we would set them up.
Right.
And we have.
Thanks.
So yeah. And so then in terms of the other C building, which is going on right now, as you can see, gutted, right? They're moving forward with that. A lot of work and design has gone into those classrooms. It's gonna be very similar to building the, the other current, you know, classroom building that's being completed right now, which is, you know, a beautiful space. Like I said, Moro Bay, they're, they're gonna have, you know, tons of classroom space on the campus when this, this final building is completed. So it's, it's exciting. And this was just kind of a backdrop by the office of the kind of theater. So they are gonna have a theater entrance there on the right-hand side, there's kind of a walkway, right? So even if the school is, you know, kind of a nighttime activity, we can lock down the portions of the school, kind of have this theater, be, you know, to be kind of a community used area as well, right? But it's got a, kind of a nice entry area where, where they can walk in. And so, yeah, it's, it's moving along. I was really impressed with kind of where they're at and what it looks like.
I have a question, and I, and I don't mean to be
Okay.
So asking so many questions, but just, I'm looking at the fencing here, and I know that we've recently put up some temporary fencing at several of our sites. But if we're successful with Measure C, would this be an example of the type of permanent fencing that we would aspire to for all of our elementary sites?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's like, it's really good looking.
It's kind of a decorative look, right? Doesn't, you know, again, ADA accessibility issues with the gates, those types of things, which is nice. You know, again, each school, the color doesn't have to be black, right? So we have, you know, Seal Smith, this will get matches theirs, right? You have Sinsheimer matches theirs, there's feet now from there, new, new front. So, you know, it can change, but, but basically that's the look, right? Of having that decorative fencing, in particular around the front of the campus. You know, you don't need this around the whole campus, right?
I know, but this is, but that's the point of entry.
Right, I mean, just, yeah, the curb appeal for schools, right? It's important, it really is important, that our schools are inviting beautiful places, right? And I think, again, you know, for the board, you know, as you walk around and you talk to kids, and, you know, kids really appreciate the, the new facilities. It, it really makes a difference, right? In terms of their day-to-day interaction on the campus and, and teachers as well, right?
It's a big morale booster.
No, huge, right? I mean, you, it's, it's kind of like dressing up, right? Like when you, when you dress up, you feel better, right? Like it's, and I think it's the same thing with our schools and, and kind of how kids feel when they're, when they're around. So it, it's exciting. And again, for me, that's part of the reason for Measure C is that, you know, our elementary and middle school kids should feel that same way, right? So, so yeah, so we'll see, we'll see how it goes. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of the information I had to share. I know Eric was gonna share a little bit about Measure C, right? And, yeah.
So I just wanted to add a comment that I really appreciate the ability to close off and open up discrete portions of our campuses for particular purposes. I think, not just from a safety standpoint, which as we know is really important, but just general maintenance and upkeep and that kind of thing. I, I, I really like that. Today's evening, especially the evening of that.
So before I get started, are there any other questions for Measure D before I move on to C?
So I, if I can, I just, I really wanna thank staff, I want to thank Ron, your architects, everybody, because I have attended, I think, two to three performances at San Luis High Theater. One of them actually been Moro Bay High School, coming to reform there, which was kind of great. And, you know, we all visited the CTE classrooms, and it is just amazing. So that's my last comment for Measure D for today. It was great, it's, it's just great.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, Mr. Buckman. I, I, I do wanna say, before we talk about Measure C, you know, I, I do wanna just acknowledge, without, without being dramatic, what I will say is many school districts in California, when they have bonds passed, what ends up happening is they're, it's sort of like a quiet, quiet thing that doesn't reach a lot of attention, but I, I notice it, and I've noticed it for years, where they put up multiple projects to the public. And then when all that is said and done, and the bond passes, and then they, they get construction underway, about five, seven, eight, nine, 10 years into it, an announcement's made that, clam, we're not able to do three or four of those projects that we promised because we ran out of funds. And they just kind of like lay it out there. And so when Measure D was passed and approved by the board to move forward to the voters, it was made clear to me by the board that they, if we're gonna promise something, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna say to the public, these are the things we expect to get done, please vote for them. And the expectation on me as the superintendent is that it needs to get done, that we need, we need to be good stewards of our public's money, and especially, you know, tax dollars that we're asking for. And, and so that's where you, you know, looked to me and said, okay, well, what, what will this look like internally? To, in order, what accountability measures will you build in? And that's where, as the bond advisor, Mr. Holcomb, you interviewed him. He was assigned this position to work with Mr. Pinkerton and his team on really looking at the complexities involved in these multimillion-dollar projects in an environment of quickly shifting economic situations and factors that, that influence the ability to get these things done. And I just watched it from my vantage point, I've watched it through the years, Mr. Pinkerton, Mr. Holcomb, Mr. Bonin, working together as a team along with the, the architects, the contractors and so forth. It's not always pretty. It just isn't. But I consider that to be healthy tension. And that healthy tension over time allows for really good decisions to be made that protect the public's interests. And I, and I'm proud to say that Measure D were able to say, we are getting all of those projects done that we, that when I was out, you know, trying to explain to the public what we were hoping to accomplish, I had a number of parents say to me in the community, if I vote for this, am I gonna get a pool? If I vote for this, am I gonna get a track? If I vote for this, will the kids have their classrooms or their theater? Or will the schools be safe because of this? And, and I can check off yes to all of those things. There are some small things that still need to be addressed. I, I, I know this, and I mentioned it earlier. But those are structural, I mean, system, systems issues that will get resolved in short order. But I'm really proud to say that we have a great team. We have, I call it the formula. A formula of making sure there's lots of checks and balances, there's lots of conversations occurring behind the scenes, that we're fully transparent with the board along the way. And I will say to you, we're, we're in that very rare space of districts that are actually able to say, we've gotten everything done that we promised. That's, that's really cool stuff, which then gives me the confidence to lean in and say, Measure C allows us to now go out and do, finish the job, K-12. Meaning, let's get our elementary and middle schools completed, let's get Pacific Beach High School completed, so that all of our students have, and our staff, have modernized facilities that reflect the 21st century, which allows our educational programs to gain traction. And it shows a lot of respect for our professionals that work with our kids. It shows a lot of respect and pride for our students to walk into schools and see clean and modern, and updated restrooms, educational spaces that are, have proper ventilation and reasonable temperature, it's night and day. And for me, it's also something, when you go into the, any of the new buildings at the high schools, little things like indoor locking doors, classroom doors that lock from the inside. You know, it's a simple thing, but it's an important thing. And we know from our safety analyses that that's a critical safety function. Well, to do that across all of our elementary schools and middle schools is millions of dollars. To, in, knowing climate change is occurring, climate is, when I first got here in 2010, I would say there were, there was less than a month out of the year where you really needed air conditioning. Maybe a, a month out of the year. Some people would say two weeks, ah, you don't need air conditioning. But for, for someone that walks around and looks in those classrooms and actually pays attention, I'm telling you, it is now four months, not one month, but more like four months of, of time when, if you're in a classroom and you're teaching, it is uncomfortable to teach. It's uncomfortable for the kids to learn. And that's a substantial amount of time. It is, global warming is a real thing, if you haven't really paid attention. It's real, and I know you have, I'm just being polite. But with that said, Measure C to me represents respect, it represents a value that, that we place on safety, that we place on, on learning environments that are, that are respectable and, and adequate. When we place our educators in those spaces, we, we are saying we value it when we have paid attention to those things. So Measure C is about, is about safety and security. It's about learning conditions that promote that 21st century mindset. And, and ultimately, it's also about addressing some super important things that we must address. If it's not now, then when? Things are gonna be more and more expensive. And so when you look at our schools, at all of our elementary and middle school sites, you're looking at schools that are 50, 60, 70 years old. So it's not something that I take lightly, but it is something that is really important that we model and move forward on. We have a team that's efficient, effective, and competent. We should go for this, and, and that's why the board voted for this 7-0. It's now going before the public. And I wanted to share with you a moment quickly about our Measure C work, the committee that has been put together. And Ryan, could you do me a favor and go to your email? I sent you the link. I just sent it to you about 30 minutes ago. If you could click on that and share, I just wanna go through the committee webpage, and you'll be one of the first to have seen it, but it is live. But I just wanted to give you an update as to what we've been doing behind the scenes. For those of you that don't know, we cannot do this work as public employees. So much of the formation of Measure C has, the committee for Measure C has been done at my lunch, at our lunchtime, or after school, or on weekends, okay? And so what this website does, and let me just kind of go through it, is, is here are the pictures that, you know, you can see when the school was built, and sort of the conditions that we're talking about. And, and so it just kind of, it runs through there. So Ryan, if you could, scroll down, and I think it, it does the scroll down. So it talks about, it talks about, you know, why we're doing this. If you go to the, if you go actually to the top of, of this, there we go. So if you go abouts, about it, so that's why it's needed, outdated, unsafe schools, and it kind of talks about the specifics. And I'll get to the add your name piece in a minute. But you can kind of see the work that's been done behind the scenes, getting this ready from this committee. Talks about the master facility plan, it shows pictures, and really speaks to the reasons why it's needed. And as you can see from those pictures, these are the things that the public may not know. And these are, this is what happens when you have 50, 60, 70-year-old facilities. And, and so Ryan, if you go, you can go to the top and go to news and information. And right here, they put together a flyer that will go out to the public as well. These will be mailed out as well. And so it talks about why we're, we're, we're yes on C, and, and specifically some of the fact sheets. So these are some of the things I'll, I'll, I'll forward you to this website so you can explore it on your own. And then what I'd like to do, if I could, go back to the homepage, Ryan, and then I wanna scroll down and show you who's the committee. There we go. So the co-chairs, we're fortunate to have three people in our community that are just really ambitious. So really, they see the importance of this. So we have Jay Beck, who's a community banker, is also a Hawthorne graduate, Laguna Middle School and Slow High graduate, as well as Slow High parent, Laguna parent. He is a community banker for American Riverbank, and so he's got roots here in our community. Quinn Brady is a Baywood Elementary parent, as well as very involved in the, in our district community and broader community as well. And then Greg, Gregory Gillette, who is a San Luis Coastal parent. His wife is a teacher in our district, and he's an attorney in, in town as well. And these are the committee members. Yeah. And, and I also wanna talk about the committee members. And so there are more than this, but we're just double downing, double checking with everyone to make sure they're on board. And so we have, we have Hawthorne, Sinsheimer, Laguna, we have Del Mar. We also have Los Osos rep, but we're still working out some of the kinks there. So this is a work in progress. And then, of course, we have Brian Krill, who's been so gracious to agree to be our treasurer. And of course, Dave Maggie Cox, as well as Chip Vishi, are, are helping out with the communications and the facilitation. And, and so what this, I also wanna give a shout out to Ryan and Ron for helping with some of the fundraising behind the scenes. And so this is well-funded, and, and a whole lot of energy and support going on behind the scenes. And I just wanted to share this with you. So you're aware, I will forward you the link so you can explore it on your own. But I'm, you know, very, very excited. The endorsement page, just so you know, we did, we did submit by, by virtue of the required requirement, in order to get this on the ballot, we had to get five people to support, actually sign their name to the ballot. And so we were fortunate to have Erica Stewart from the mayor of San Luis, Dawn Addis, city councilwoman from Moro Bay. We also had Chris Unger, our board president. We had Roth Lewin, who is our safety consultant, but also our former CalFire chief, chief of fire, among many other things he's done. And then, and then we also had Sam, Senator, former Senator Sam Blaisley, former president of our foundation, sign off on that as well. So we have bipartisan support, we have a whole lot of, of energy and, and positivity underneath this. But, and I'll say this, we all also know that inflation and economic worry is a, is a concern. So we're not, we're not, you know, going into this blindly. We know that we're asking a lot of our community to support another bond that's in, in excess of $349 million. But with that said, we plan, we also, as I spoke with Mackenzie Schuman yesterday morning from the Tribune, she asked me right out of the chute, why so much money? Why more than Measure D? And it's a good question, and I just wanted to share it. My response to her was a mathematical response. For Measure D, our primary focus was our two comprehensive high schools. And so the $177 million bond in Measure D was really targeting our comprehensive high school program. And so the denominator in that case was two. The numerator was 177 million, but divisible by, primarily by two schools. The numerator was 177 million, but divisible by, primarily by two schools. The 349 million is going to be, the divisor is 15. So, the amount of money divided out over 15 sites is really not a whole lot of money when you think of it in those terms. So, we have a lot to do. It's a, in many ways, Measure C is a far more complex and challenging project to get done the way we would expect it to be done. And when you look at it through that lens, I have to tell you, it really stresses me out thinking about all the variables and thinking about the challenges when you think about expectation and then the reality of the budget. So, even with a $349 million budget, over 15 school sites, that's going to be quite a challenge. I believe we can do it with our team. I believe we can engage our staff and public quite well and get this done in a way that we can keep our promises. Because that's my expectation, and I know it's the board's expectation. So, that's my, that's what I want to share with you today. I'm excited, November 8th is just around the corner. And I believe we had a good momentum.
Mark and Marilyn, because I appreciate all that information. Because we all walk away with different things. So, at some point, you said, buildings that are X-old. And I thought I heard like 60 or 70 years old.
You did. Yeah.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
And the newest one is like 144.
Our newest, our newest school is Monocroft, and it was built in 1991.
Different, okay.
But all the other schools, all of the other elementary, middle, Laguna Middle Schools built in 1968 and is still considered relatively new. And we've been good stewards of our facilities. Kudos to Ryan and his team. But that's a 50-plus-year-old site.
So, you know, for me, I think about, so, my house is 1972, all right? And it's had one or two residents at a time and they walked through. But you're talking about a site that's 70 years old, that's had 400 or 500 kids a year.
Always running through it, yes.
Running through it, so.
Yes.
I just, you've got to put this in perspective.
Geez. Yeah. Yes, that's a really good way to, really good way to frame it.
Thanks.
Marilyn?
So, given the age of our schools, will we be, or is there an avenue to seek supplementary funds that will, will help beyond the $349 million on the bond?
Yeah, so, we, and Ryan and Ron can speak to this better than I can, but, but yes, we're always on the lookout for matching funds from state, grants for, or future statewide bonds that are 50/50 matches. So.
CTE's been great for them, right? We're very fortunate, because they, the state has actually funded those. So, the problem with like modernization funds, you know, like I shared earlier, you know, we're basically owed almost $5 million in modernization funds. I mean, we, who knows when we'll actually get those dollars, right? So, that's the, that's the hard part about, you know, trying to count on state money to do those things. But with that said, there are kind of little carve-outs. So, like CTE, like the charter school funding we got from Billy Santafin. Like, I predict there's going to be TKK funds. So, we're already in the hopper to get those funds. I guess we will anytime we can. And honestly, that's why we were able to complete the projects. It wasn't 177 million alone. It was because we turned that to the 200, right? So, that, you know, those are things that definitely we'll need. Because this is a long, I mean, the other part for the board to understand, it's not like you get a check for 349 million the first day. Right, right? These, these dollars come to, will come to us as we sell bonds over, you know, a period of time, right? So, and you have to have assessed value there to keep it at that $49 front of a thousand, right? So, you know, that all kind of plays into it. That's why we have a great relationship with John Isom. We were really fortunate with Measure D in that because the values had gone up, we were able to go out and get those dollars, right? So, you know, we did 50 million, did 50 million. And then, we went ahead and did the whole 77 million the last, right? Because we were able to, right? So, that's, that's something too that, you know, those are things you have to factor in, the time. Should Measure C pass, we will be having countless meetings with the board about priorities, next steps, right? You know, we do have, you know, we were already kind of moving forward with some of those things, right? So, we have a TKK plan. Gary Carey just finished a site-wide TSA security fencing plan for every site, which I'll be sharing with the board soon. So, those are things like we can jump on. You know, it's not like Measure D where it took us, you know, we had to ramp up, get everything together and move forward, right? Like, we're ready to roll. So, PV, Baywood, right? Some of the things that were priorities with Measure D at the last one, you know, bond measure, those are things that I want to be able to jump right into, right? And, you know, and get those projects going. So, it's exciting.
So, let me ask them, I'm sorry, just a follow-up here. The $5 million in state modernization funds that have not been received, but are anticipated, they've been approved. Okay. We went ahead and did the modernization work under Measure D. Can those funds now be applied to Measure C work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any of our facility work in the district, so yes, absolutely.
Well, the great hope is that we have a state school bond measure. We haven't had one for how long, Ryan?
Yeah.
A big one for 10 years or something. So, it's kind of due again, and that would, I mean, I've had programs where I started with $30 million and ended up doing $65 million. So, you notice we're at 349 and our needs are at 5-something. And those are real needs, they're not imaginary what-if. So, then the other, so if there is a great expectation that the state will pass a bond and that'll really save our necks as far as the 500-something need, because we'll take our bond funds, that'll be our matching money to get those funds. If the state, like, on modernizations, the state pays, what is it? 60%, I believe, and we pay 40, new buildings 50/50. So, we have to add match money. So, that's what we'll leverage.
So, we have a list of needs, of needs that totals out at 500 and something million dollars, but we're going out for a $349 million bond. Who will rank, order those needs?
The board.
Ultimately, you will.
We will, yeah.
Absolutely.
So, then we have to, but to get the state money, we have to go to California Department of Education, OPSA, Office of Public School Construction, and then on to the SAV. So, there's a whole lot in that whole effort that we've not faced at this one. So, because it was no state money. So, we do have an expectation that some of that will develop, we also.
Excellent, thank you.
The other, other major thing to consider is we've had a relatively, through our, this Measure D bond measure, a stable value of the dollar until the last couple of years, where it's plummeted. The value of the dollar's gone thus inflation. So, if that inflationary curve continues, it's a demographic or, and a strategic battle that we'll be facing with a shrinking dollar and a growing list at the same time. So, pretty nasty mathematical formula of that.
One of the things, I mean, we literally just talked about this Wednesday, Ron, Chris Bonner, myself. You know, when you, when we move forward, we work with the board on priorities, really that budgeting process, you know, you don't want to like, you know, the first few projects out of the chute, spend all your money, right? Make them fantastic, Taj Mahal, and then have no money to finish everything else. So, you know, that is definitely something we're going to have to really lay out, projects, what the needs are, how to do those. Are we going to do modular, are we going to stick built? Are we, you know, all of those things are going to be conversations, right? That we'll bring to you to make decisions about as we move forward. So, you know, we've already started. I mean, we, Louisiana Mar has done some modular facilities that, you know, we took a team down and looked at, and that, you know, there's ways for us to get all of this work done and to kind of lay that out from a budget perspective, so.
But to differentiate a modular is different than a portable classroom.
Right, yeah, right.
Modular puts it down, yeah.
Right, exactly. So.
And those are for all the world permanent buildings.
We really can't tell. We're stuck, you know, high ceilings, those types of things.
Never to be moved, is a good way to say it.
So, we'll be looking at, you know, examining all of that, right? As we lay out kind of a bond program to present to the board, to then prioritize which projects to start with, so.
We'll have to have many more architects, many more contractors to be able to do these 15 sites in a concise time so our dollars don't fall to the point where we re-arch with our hat in our hand explaining why we couldn't finish our projects. So, it's a first caliber challenge.
So, I just wanted to point out quickly that when Dr. Prager mentioned that he talked to Mackenzie Schuman, I went to the Tribune. The article's in today's paper together with states about the tours, the 17.
Oh, that's good.
The times where, so it's already in the Tribune.
How's the article?
It's, well, I just read it, just picked it very quickly and then saw that the tours were mentioned and wanted to pick that up.
Cool. Well, that's what I have for today, that's what we have. I actually have a lunch appointment with a, with someone at noon that I need to get ready for. But unless there's other questions, I don't have anything else to add to this conversation.
Anything from our Zoom viewers, including the public? Scene none, I guess this will conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, I scored my way through that one.
I just kept seeing this, I kept seeing.
Argh, baby!